A roundtable discussion, but we'll start out, I'll ask you to start out.
Oliver Williams.
President.
Mercedes.
President.
Lynch.
President.
Timmy.
President.
O'Brien.
President.
I think that was all of the two.
President.
And Mayor, by a penny is gone.
All right, we're gonna start out with the first reading of non-consent agenda, first reading ordinance.
Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinance, House of 3015-2022 Resolution Amending Chapter 10 Elections With the Molling Code of Ordinances by Refuting Chapter 10 in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof One New Chapter 10 Dealing with Same Subject Matter. Since approval at the last meeting, there was an update, and that is shown in the attached redline version. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Jimmy. I'll ask you to stand for a point of allegiance.
A point of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, I would ask if there's anyone here for public comment? No one here for public comment, having heard none, we will move on to our roundtable discussion. So that's me.
Yeah, I'll start with me, thank you very much, Oliver O'Brien, good evening, all the persons. I have to be correct, now that we change that. So as you know, last year, the council worked all through the summer and into the fall to create what ultimately became our three-year strategic plan for fiscal years 22, 23, and 24. The process of doing that coincided directly with our three-year annual budget for fiscal year 22, and then projected into fiscal years 23 and 24. And since the adoption of that budget, as you know, we developed an action plan and a dashboard to report regularly on what is taking place across the spectrum of all three pillars and plus all 85 goals under the various objectives that were created by the council at that time. And that's been moving along very nicely. I don't think there's been any questions or any issues or problems that have arisen. Essentially, we launched the program, and then going forward, in the event that you didn't have a strategic plan, oftentimes this time of year before a local government launches into its annual budget development process, staff and management meets with council, and then they come up with strategic goals for subsequent fiscal years, which is very common practice, especially where you do not have a strategic action plan, strategic plan to guide your decision-making. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to really kind of review, in brief, where we're at, and then more importantly, try and settle in on fiscal 23 as opposed to 24 or beyond. As you know, 22 is well underway, I'll review that with you briefly. From the handout materials, I think we can pull some of that up on the screen. There you are, thank you, David, so we'll leave that up for a moment. But to kind of put things into perspective, last year was a different time than today. We didn't have eight and a half, 12% inflation. We did not have fuel prices, you know, reaching 40 or 50-year highs. All of that plays directly into everything we do from a public purchase standpoint, public contract standpoint. So as we look at fiscal year 23, you know, one of the things that we're going to be recommending is that we've become a little more conservative in terms of what it is we planned on doing versus what we're currently doing, but some of what we're doing today will continue forward into subsequent years, we'll roll over those projects. And then the newer projects that were slated for 24, and we'll get into that, or 23 rather, we'll take a look at those, and we'll try and prioritize. So it's a bit of an exercise, I don't expect that we may finish at 100% tonight. It is a bit of a challenge, as you all know. But I'll be looking for ways to identify, you know, those projects that were not started and not full on hold, not only for the current year, but also looking at 23. Potential new items that, from the time of adoption of the budget and then going into the current fiscal year, different staff recommendations that came up, like the central fire station and what could be with that in terms of priorities. And then, I'm just not picking on the fire department, which is a very large ticket item. And then old business that has not been started yet. So as we look at next year, and staff's well aware of where we're at on this, we're probably going to have a conservative approach, we're not gonna let the boat stop moving forward. We may notch it down just to ensure that, you know, we maintain our good fiscal reserves, that we maintain our programs and projects going forward so that there's no detriment to the general public who are excited about what's going on. It's just that we might need to slow down, and that would be just fiscal prudence going forward. And of course, with Carol assisting in that, I'm sure, a bit of a fiscal conservative, so it'll be helpful, working through those gymnastics when we start moving towards a budget. Any questions so far on any of that? Okay. What I did is I put up, and you should have it in front of you, the strategic planning roundtable worksheet for today, and as you can see, we have those three principal pillars, infrastructure, our quality of place, as well as our economy, and those are for descent, the pillars that drive the organization forward. You can see that under infrastructure, we identified clearly projects that may have not been started or on hold, and then potential new items are identified below. So as you look at the first column, you can see developing a multi-modal transportation system. We did have funds allocated for that, that has not moved forward yet. Exploring natural power re-plan opportunities again, 22 project not funded, updating the zoning code, well, as you know, that's a 23 project. In part, that relates directly to the conclusion of the form-based code program project that we're working on presently with Coto Metrics, and that has had a healthy beginning and a healthy start, and the hard work on that, the labor that has done, and the heavy lifting that actually started once all the public engagement processes have done. So when that project is concluded, we'll do the logical and sequential time to update our zoning code, I mean, at the same time, we're working on our comprehensive plan. Developing a stormwater management policy, as you know, that's a big issue. We don't have an overall comprehensive stormwater management plan. That is something that we would be looking at doing, that's not currently funded for 23. And then beyond that, then you get, you do the other items that were in the plan, which is updating our bike waste plan, there is funding for that, developing a tree bank policy, there is funding for that in the general plan. And those are things that are actually contained within the strategic plan under infrastructure. Beyond that, then we have the central fire station study in the RFQ. Well, if the RFQ is done, that is live, it's live as of Monday, when we posted Sunday in the newspaper, the public noticed, so that is actually moving forward. It's approved by council, the equipment version and building maintenance of three other fire stations, I mean, due to deferred maintenance, not the items that need to be addressed because we want to maintain our facilities and not fall into a point of disrepair where it becomes possible to do actual repair of them. So that would probably be disbanded in here from your general operating budget for next year, unless there's any capital.
Yeah, are those not in our facilities plan?
In the facilities plan itself?
Yeah.
No, not at those times, they were not identified, they're not identified.
So when we put our facilities plan together, we didn't include some of the buildings we own?
That's one of the things that we are working on, is that we need to expand that prior plan. It's just been kind of where it had been, you know, three, four years ago, whenever it got developed. Slowly but surely, we need to make it be comprehensive to include these types of things.
So what was included?
Kind of short-term, identifiable things that departments have come up. I mean, it doesn't include all the roofs on all the buildings, those types of things. Or our schedule for painting yet, so Sarah's working on that.
Yeah, I better defer, it did, it used to include roofs and stuff like that, so you better defer to Sarah.
Yes.
We're gonna take a hard look at that.
But yeah, that's a lot different than when we set up what we were told.
Well, we will find out. All right, and then moving on, of course, the city hall renovations in the basement, because you know, as we talked about the previous meeting, we're looking to improve that space, utilize it, which feeds into the records management program, which I'll get to. And then you got the Arsenal Bridge and pedestrian letdown structure, that is something we are working correctly with Roosevelt Group and working with the Army in terms of preparing a proposal that we'd like to submit for the BCIP grant funding, which is the National Campaign. The grant, it's, the proposals themselves are due at the end of July, they're reviewed in August, and then the grant submission happens in the fall. And then it runs for a period of like five years in order to spend those dollars. So we'll be looking at that, whether that's the letdown structure as well as, you know, basically whatever the bridge requires to be done. So it fits right into the wheelhouse, by the way, in talking with their evaluators from US Air Force, who's also on the project hired by Roosevelt Group. So one of the original evaluators has helped review, like, Peter Olson's hard, very good. And then improvement preparation for the Amtrak, that's a multi-topic discussion, whether it's the quiet zone that we're talking about, the automatic train control that's required. Council just recently, this past meeting actually, approved the second phase of the original study that we launched several years ago. So that will start to delve into the details we need in terms of negotiating with IDOT as well as the Iowa Interstate Railway. So that has, that is an octopus, that project, with many players involved, with different government, and we are working on that, still is, things are moving, so that's good to know.
Do you think that with the current governor, that, I mean, the current governor's statement is more open to this than the past governor? I mean, we weren't here for the last governor.
No, it wasn't.
But it kind of, I think that's where it kind of got put off, I think with bad issues. They were talking about this 20 years ago, so.
Yeah, one time. I will say that, I will say this to the council, we have been, it's hard when you've been through, I'm always treating this like my apologies, I'm doing best. Speak at the both sides, we'll look. We have had staff level meetings with IDOT and the IDOT consultant. We have had meetings with the Iowa Interstate Railway, as well as their consulting engineers. Tony and his, like, everyone. So there's been a number of discussions that have been going on with engineering as well as with utilities, because we happen to have a permanent easement on the railroad right-of-way, close to where, well, where the pumping station is at, and that's basically kind of just south, south and a little bit east of where the captain's table is, which is where the outfits are, the pipes that go out there, twin pipes. So we've had, we're having discussions about that, Mr. Shank did a great job of researching that, found the actual permanent easement, and then he also found a series of lease, leases that we have for property from the predecessor to the Iowa Interstate, renewed by the Iowa Interstate, of land that stretches all along the railroad that was reserved for municipal purposes within railroad right-of-way. I'm not sure what those municipal purposes are, there is nothing identifiable with the date since we entered into those agreements years ago with Heritage Railway Corporation, so.
What year would that have been? Seventy, sixty, eighty?
Way close, way back, way close, way back, probably twenty years. It's been paying though, it's been for a long time. So we're looking into that as to the purpose and the reason behind that. The railroad, of course, has an interest in displacing stormwater, they don't want water standing on their property, so there's a lot to negotiate with them, from stormwater, moving stormwater, to relocating the pumping station, to evaluating the necessity for these leases, which I'm not sure why we haven't yet, we'll figure that out. And then the quiet zones themselves, and the automatic train control, which is required to have a quiet zone, so.
Railroad, I was wondering, they're not making this pay, they don't do it.
It's kind of, we're holding a very valuable card right now, it's that permanent easement. They want us, I was gonna tell them at a cost, negotiate with council's approval, so. But that has many moving parts, you know, and then there's the political side of it.
Sure.
I'll be governors and people in Washington, so, but it is a priority, and it seems like they actually have some real life to it right now, so we'll keep that ball alive.
It has been greater.
This is gonna be a long meeting. Go ahead.
That, have they come to any conclusion with IDOT negotiating for the upgrades? I mean, it really seems like that's, has been the biggest issue. We announced, hey, we're doing this, and then the railroad is like, great, I'm glad you're up. And then IDOT went to them and said, well, you pay for half of the price that you're doing. And so have they come to any agreements on the, what the railroads are gonna pay, or is it just?
There's probably an understanding of what both parties have gotten to, but they have not closed the delta yet, and that's really what the issue is, how they close that delta and how they get to the point where there's an agreement that's reached, and they are working on that. They are working, there's a lot of pressure to get that resolved, another 12 years. Maybe, yeah, maybe not, we'll see, we'll see. So that's the, that's a big ticket item, of course, that relates directly to the one below it, which is the stormwater pumping station relocation. You know, and as you know, we worked with IMAG originally for the design of that project. We, you know, applied for FEMA grant for that, we would deny that grant. I think they wanted a hundred-year storm event purpose stormwater system, I think we went in with fifty. You know, so we're, we're working on that as well, how to go about getting grants for that. They're well aware of the end, the railroad and air engineers recognize the impact of stormwater, whether it's coming from the block, and the impact it has on their rail bed, as much as the flooding that comes, you know, the backflow that happened from the Mississippi. So they've got their own modeling as well, so the engineers are actually communicating back and forth now in terms of how best to conquer the issue of stormwater in that particular part of town. And then the stormwater issues along the rail line, from east to west, all the way throughout.
I know IDOT did a, I forget what they called it, but basically a looksee along the railroad right-of-way to make sure the tracks were inspected, because it had to be okay for, sixty miles an hour or whatever. There are high-speed rail in the United States, it's still a thousand miles an hour. But that was 10 years ago, they did that, so.
Maybe, I'm a gambling guy, I say six.
Six.
I do gamble. I'm going, I'm gonna go six. What do you think, twenty-six?
Sounds good. Yeah, so going back up to the top, I mean, we've got this development multi-modal transportation system, it's 2022, we haven't done anything, now that we've got a city engineer on board. My concern is, I want to move that forward, but then having the bikeways plan two years later, that really seems like, if we're going to be doing that, they should probably be developed together. And so I think what we should be doing, and we can get funds for both of them, and it's not taking away from anything else, that we should move that up and try to give us a timeframe for when we can apply for it, when we can go, there's that new federal grant thing I sent you, that's safer, the roads, let's go. But I mean, there's a hundred million dollars with the beds are wanting to get out, and I think the applications are due this summer, and so I really think that we should be moving the bikeways, putting it up with the multi-modal plan, do that as a chunk together.
Yeah, I was looking at our, at the strategic plan, the action, action plan, and what you're referring to is, is link, there is a linkage there specifically for goal 138, which is the updated bikeways plan, as well as our 155B, which is the comprehensive plan. Because that's a, bikeways are multi-modal plan, is an element containing within a modern day plan. So they are links together, and it's just that the project hasn't launched yet, partly because of this.
I have something to say, does the bikeways plan, I know we kind of technically agreed to apply for the grant with a new grant to go out of the arsenal.
Yeah, the letdown structure.
I don't, since I was a grade schooler, I don't ride a bike anymore, but would the bike path go on that, that'd be part of the bikeways?
Part of the, part of the purpose for the letdown structure is so that military members and their families are able to leave the Arsenal Island on bicycle or on foot, which is prohibited today, not allowed to. And then that way, they would use this letdown structure near the Tony Building, and it would let them down basically where that parking structure is, it's in between, it's like right in that little grassy mole area that's there, just a little bit to the north of our van shop. It also would let people then, using the trail, residents here, be able to go up onto the Arsenal Bridge and onto the island, because their plans are to open that up and move it to the guardhouse further in onto the island, thereby allowing access to the National Cemetery and for all the purposes of the construction on the island.
So that needs to be, I guess, included in the bikeways. Well, and that's my concern of waiting until the comprehensive plan, I think that, as long, as well as the multi-modal, those things should be done, I mean, if we're doing that in 2022, they should be done in conjunctions together, not wait till the comp plan. That you're waiting.
Which is a one-year process.
Sure, yeah, and so those things, we moved up, and quite honestly, the complete streets, capification and all that, I know that staff says that it doesn't need to be codified, but we as a council have said that we want it codified, and so all that stuff should be moved up.
Okay, so I mean, if we move, if we look at the multi-modal transportation system, and then if it is integrated, obviously with the bikeway plan that's integrated into that, that could be something that, where this is indicated, that we could actually launch that project in 22, with hopes of having a completion in 23.
So I guess I'll make a motion, the bikeways plan, these streets, and the multi-modal all get put together and moved forward into 2022, and then go.
Got motion to the second of the floor.
I'm sorry, there was a discussion.
I just have a quick question about that $700,000 on the bikeways plan, that's not just, that's not $700,000 for the plan, that's also to implement.
Let me take a look to make sure.
So they have more than that, don't they?
Yeah, it was, it was, actually, the way it was set up is there was $750,000 in unrestricted article fund, for this 22, 23, 24.
Does the same duty, does it?
And that, no, that actually is for the bikeways element, and then there is another $750,000 for the multi-modal. We had $1.5 million total available, which is more than expected.
And so that would be for both plans, as much of the plans as we can then fund within it, but it wouldn't necessarily cover everything with the plans.
Correct, it's gonna require years, you know, I want to step back just for a minute to do, this is one thing I think that Carol would jump in and say, but that's polite intent. You know, in terms of the funding formulary system that Treasury Department has, or part of, you know, when we calculated those dollars carefully last year, it was kind of like way up ahead of everybody doing it, when the final rules came out, we were ready to allocate so much into restricted as well as into unrestricted. And the unrestricted was based upon financial losses we sustained back in 20, and into projections for 21. Based upon how we ended the fiscal year for 2021, it's going to have an impact on the balance and the distribution between that, which is restricted and unrestricted, we have to revisit that, so you're aware. You know, right now, we have a plan that's restricted, unrestricted, but for 23, that balance is going to change, those scales are going to adjust. Not that we won't get work done, but it's going to put it into a more difficult place to spend the money.
Yeah, and with that, I mean, I think what it's gonna take to get the plans put together in 22 and early 23, we're not gonna blow through $1,500,000 to do that. The implementation of doing it, we understand that if the balance gets out of whack from what we thought, maybe it's only $1, $2 million, because that's all going restricted, and that's more unrestricted, but I think we all.
That's just, so it's a matter of records.
Well, and also for a matter of record, I want to make sure what we talked about with the streets, that that is codified, put into the works. It's part of that motion.
Do we have any further discussion on the issue at hand? Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Yes, if you care.
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
One question? And this is, I think this question, you really do a lot of the items. As far as what we have, the harbor funding, do we have a plan in place for when we'll be taking a look back and kind of see where we're at in that process? I'm not saying do that right at this moment, I just.
Right.
Knowing, and we still have several years at which to spend that money, but I don't know if it's after a year, 18 months, two years, what's the plan, are there adjustments? Or look at things and say, this costs more than we thought it would last?
Is there reporting requirements, my earlier semi-annually?
Excuse me, we're constantly updating on a weekly basis, and we did a pretty extensive reestimate as of the end of the audit. They also gave us additional revenue, you know, they had a 4.2%, and they actually raised it to 5.1, trying to make it a little more convenient, because the economy was coming back. So these rules, and I anticipate even through 26, and if people haven't spent the money, I have a feeling they're gonna continue to look for things, and if people are trying to do that, but we will have a lot better update come budget time, because we're gonna be trying to update everything from an inflationary standpoint. What else is there to mention?
Excellent, thank you. Hope you got your, your question.
Oh, one?
Yeah, the other thing is with the tree bank policy, I mean, we've been funding this for a few years, and the policy hadn't ever come to fruition, and understandable, we went through COVID and staffing and those sorts of things, but, you know, the best time to have planted an old tree was 50 years ago, and the best time is today, because, and so I would like to move that up as well, it's a thing of staffing, understanding that maybe our arborist and stuff is probably pretty busy in the summer months, but I'd like to move that into when things are maybe a bit slower. There are lots of nonprofits out there that help communities put together policies and tree banks and stuff, Tree USA, you know, National, which, I mean, there are lots of opportunities there, and I think we just need to have that as a focus, and put it out two years from now, and it's something that we. And put it out two years from now and it's something that we, I think I pushed this three and a half years ago, the first time that I got into the budget and it's just as languished and so I do make a motion that we move that up to try to start, understanding that it might not be totally successful, but I would like to make that motion.
Motion for second? How second? Second discussion?
Sure, the council is aware, I mean, there is a hundred thousand seven fifty five in standard number for a budget, but there's forty thousand seven fifty five dollars in current budget for tree replacement. I mean, there's another thirty next year and thirty after that, that's why it's showing quarter, it's showing fiscal twenty four, but it's supposed to be complete, this is never complete. I mean, it's an ongoing process, you lose them to auto accidents, you lose them to disease, you know, or storm events take them out. But we don't, I don't believe we have as a real policy, Joe, if I'm not mistaken, at this point, we're lacking that, whether it's the policy administered through the Tree City USA, it's a pretty aggressive program. But that's a program that obviously we pursue and bring back recommendations. Mike, I don't know if you did that in other cities.
I've done trees in the area before.
And I think that's what we want, is we want that policy brought back so that we can implement it. The, the, the money that's there is probably a holdover for multiple years where it hasn't been spent and brought forward. And I, if I, if I, just for clarification, I think we have, in addition to this, we have our Dutch elm tree removal, it's separate line item that.
In the parks department.
Right, it's the parks one, yeah. So I, I don't want this to get confused because the idea is that we want to not just replace trees, but actually identify areas where we're doing C I P projects, get back to aligning some of our streets with trees and getting.
Yeah, I was going to say, what, I mean, I guess going forward, what would be our policy for replacing trees? I mean, do we just replace cars and replace?
Well.
That's a good question, I don't know.
I think that's part of why we want them to bring back a policy and then we'll make the decision on where that is, because right now we don't have one, so the money just sits there and nobody finds it other than replacement if.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then as a part of that policy, we will have to deal with the dead and diseased trees on private properties. It's another complex mess that we're trying to deal with. And I know that there is no easy answer to that one, but if they present themselves as a public nuisance, you know, and you as a resident are concerned that a storm like that tree is going to fall under roof, we have a right, a lot of cities do complain to the building department, particularly the building commissioner, and somebody goes out, inspects, and then they issue the order to have the home removed. We just had a situation come up, we had two massive oak trees on one parcel, the little ranch house stood there. And it was frightening to look at that because if that was to fall, we've never seen a tree fall on a house and it's brought thousands of them down in the train up. They cut, they cut houses in the path. And when they, when they fall, they're crush or destroy what's in their path. So those are a big concern, except for they do provide public safety risks.
On my property, I've had four oak trees die, twenty five hundred plus of them.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, the chief to bring it down.
Well, and, and that's the discussion with the, with the policy is you get, depending if we decided to do like Tree USA or something like that, there are provisions depending on how strict you get with it, where when people take down trees, they're required to replace them. It's so that you wind up with a community that continues to have storage and those sorts of things or plant them other places or put it to a bomb. So I, I think that that's something, you know, that's one of the unique things about the lean. I just flew back and I'm driving, see all the green and how wonderful it is here. Keep that up and that actually helps with stormwater immensely because it opens up in a canopy and using it as well. So it's, it's really important that we get this.
Okay, we have a motion at second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
If you care, or all those against?
Aye.
Just one there. If you care.
Anything else of concern or interest or discussion that the infrastructure?
Looking at the exploring natural prairie plants opportunities, I mean, knowing there's no budget in that line item and that's something we identified, we're going to look into, I guess, I'm curious to know what the, what the plan is, how we can address that, you know, for, for me, I would like to see this used in that as a decorative one we did, looking at instead of putting a big hunk of concrete, if we can do it better with, with a prairie, we can get some terrain, just be able to implement that sort of infrastructure. I mean, I think it's an important thing we can do that can actually launch a public spot.
I think the Parks Department has ideas on that.
Yeah.
Eric, if you want to speak to that, that'd be great.
Yeah, we just met with the friends of Riverside Park last week and I was talking about doing a, a small area down at the Green Valley area where like houses used to be and then we tore them out, we want to do a test site there. We've done a little bit of it in the drainage area at Riverside Park, that's really taken off. But we're, they're putting a plan together to bring that to park for probably in July or maybe August to do an area down that this fall. It'll take, it'll take a little while to take off, but that area is so big down there, but I would be perfect to.
Yeah, and, and they've done it, I think, across the years. Some of the storms and the, we see kind of different places. I don't know how much. I don't remember. So, but, oh, sorry, but to that point, there actually, I think it was originally budgeted, I think we used those green mountains. And that was originally, I think, water, that's what he had made motion that, that those funds that were reserved for alternatives, for grass, those sorts of things, I was gone. So who did that, did that, but that was, that's where there's some.
And I mean, there is twenty five thousand in twenty two and twenty three total, twelve five and twelve five as a general fund, you know.
I guess I have a question for Eric maybe, do you know how much this was, the cost was?
Yeah.
I mean, it's twenty five thousand dollars, is that?
Yeah, so I attended, I made a planning workshop at the Iowa Parks and Recreation Conference and they said two to six hundred dollars per acre per year, depending on the scale of the site to get it started.
We could fight part of Western.
They have an agricultural department.
In the county Indian Forest.
Yeah, yeah.
They get a lot of press and that.
So there, there could be some partnerships.
We could have some partnerships.
Great.
That'd be cool.
So, I mean, any other questions, I guess, I'm just, just tell them.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one last, with the develop the stormwater management policy.
Yeah.
I know that we had made those few tweaks that Andy had brought, but then I think we voted, actually, it was probably in this room at our work session several months ago, where we had asked for them to come back, prior to that, since today, with a plan for redevelopment, that there, some kind of system of either incentive program or somebody's redeveloping a property that they make it better than how they found it. It's like right now, I use kick serve as an example, it was an asphalt parking lot. And so when they developed it, as long as they didn't make it worse, and there was no possible way to make it worse, they didn't have to make it any better. And so we wound up with just a complete asphalt thing, they did have to put more merchant trees in the lanes here, but that, I think we have made that vote for them to come back with now. And so that's, I mean, this is that is in twenty twenty three, but is that going to be supplemented soon and then next year?
Yeah, I'd love to do all this year. Don't be a lot of, you want to speak to it.
Yeah, so the stormwater management plan would be something that we need to put forward, it's in communicating communication with engineers and trying to gauge their level of resativeness that's going to require. And that we would budget for that for twenty twenty three and plan to execute it then. And regarding to your directive to bring back this incentive program, it's our intention to bring that to you, it was our goal to have that toward the end of June, but it's becoming more and more complex as we dive into it because it's leaking into the trade analysis that we're doing for stormwater. So we expect to have something for you within the next two or three decisions. Our intention is for you.
Yep, okay. By the end of August?
Yes.
Right?
Hold on.
All right, so there's nothing left under that infrastructure pillar. I was going to ask all of you the kind of rank order, the top five priorities that push change the shop, and I think we'll get to that. I think you're doing it in large part tonight, but I think we might get to that at a later point. Then in terms of pillar number two, which is our quality of place. Let me do that too. This is a fire department project with community point health, the chief can speak to that, but obviously there was no budget before that, the twenty two program. Chief, you might want to just bring us up to date where that's at as a reminder.
Yeah, Deputy Chief Noyd has been doing that on his scheduled days and what he does is interacts with community points when they discharge a mobile resident. Deputy Chief Noyd will visit, do a home, provide a home visit with the hope that we minimize readmission to the hospital within seventy two hours. And so he's been doing those fairly slow start because of the pandemic. So we're kind of starting to see that ramp up with the hope that he would increase the orders of both residents that we can attend to and minimize the readmission. So that's the whole goal. So we're finding great success, great feedback.
Appreciate that. And then moving on, the police should have started, the enhancement of the mobile crisis response.
I had a question, let me just say. How many releases of mobile residents were expected, like at a weekly, do we have any idea what's that number and it's like?
No, and, and part of it that I probably failed to mention was that it is a voluntary program, we can't just impose our will on those residents that do not ask for required service. So there is some back and forth communications via telephone or Android email. And so I think the last numbers I saw was right around approaching twenty so far this year. So that puts it in perspective. Then request the service and our appreciation.
The next two items on top, the quality of place related to the police department programs, one with the Robert Young Center and the other one with the Center for Youth and Family Solutions in schools. Chief, maybe one of those kind of updates where we're at, those are the twenty twenty two goals.
Sure, well, with respect to the enhanced mobile crisis response systems, this pro, this goal is on hold largely because of two factors. One, the, as you know, the mental health system that is in our area is a private entity. They are suffering from a staffing problem, just like the rest of, of the industries. It is, it is not a financial issue, it is purely a staffing issue. In fact, seven, the seven light board of Rockland County had given them money to do some expansion, they have the money available, they can't staff them. Additionally, in August of last year, Governor Prisker signed the Community Emergency Supports Act, Services Act, which you may know is coming forward as nine eight eight, which is a statewide call center. They've diverted some funds from the nine one one fund to create a statewide nine eight eight program. None of that is up and running, the framework isn't ready, we've been participating in Zoom and calls. So I just think there's just a lot of, for lack of a better term, plates in the air right now, but it would be best if we waited to see how some of these things played out. I'm in regular contact with Robert Young on improving services that we have, but I think it probably would, would be put in the cart, I'm using a bunch of analogies here, the cart before the horse, if we, if we, you know, work on this project right now. But, I mean, we're, we're working on it, but there's nothing really substantive to report to you other than, you know, we're engaged.
So this is a project that could likely end up being pushed back into twenty three to get a change in the law and get like a staffing itself.
Yeah, there's three triggers and I won't bore you with that information over here a long time. There's three triggers on the new CESA Act and one of them is, is services are available in the area. And that's what we're collaborating with now is, you know, and in fact, yesterday the mayor sent me a contact at Western, I'm going to meet with Western later, probably at the month, about a kind of a grow your own program and what the needs are for social services with respect to law enforcement, with respect to our community, to try to help Western develop those programs. Because there's two levels, there's a bachelor and a master's level that trigger qualified mental professional designations that frankly the community needs.
Any questions in that program? Okay, so then the next one, chief, is the expansion of the Center for Youth and Family Solution partnerships.
Yeah, this has turned out to be almost a model for, for our region, really. We, we continue to have great success with our partnership. I don't want to portray this as a co-responder model because it isn't a co-responder, it's just so hard to provide that as a twenty four seven. I refer this as a wraparound model where we're continuing to follow up. So we do have money available, I apologize, they didn't bring the amount, I just authorized the first two radios, our new P twenty five radios for the social workers that we have embedded, they have vests and they go up in the field and so now we're going to equip them with radios. So part of that art funding that you set aside, I authorized, I think it was like six thousand dollars, if I remember, so they can have radios for their safety, to be more active in the field. So we're continuing, I think we're on, on track as we're expanding staffing, that, that's a challenge for them. Unfortunately, social services doesn't pay a lot, so they're, they have a hard time with staff turnover, but we have two great people that work with us and so I'm comfortable with where we're at with that program.
Moving on. Next item up is the park department and that's the update on Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which we've got slated for fiscal twenty three right now. So that would be in next year's, next year's budget for eighty thousand dollars. So the estimate is improved, next item is improving staff development and training in twenty three, well, kind of a misnomer to say twenty three because the reality is that we do provide training in different departments on a recurring basis, some of it is required, some of it is not required. So, and it varies by department. So right now, the HR department is reaching out to all, all of the departments in terms of gathering their training programs, their training requirements, their training schedules and assembling that so the council has a clear picture in terms of all the training that does take place. Sometimes it's a question whether or not we do enough training, too much, some people will tell you we do too much training, others will tell you we don't do enough. So we're, we're looking at that in hopes of developing as we wind down our recruitment process, which has been, it's been incredible. Yeah, how many people have you told them to be hired in the last eighteen months? So this is a very active department, they recruit more people than professional recruiting companies that we have. So they're doing a great job and I just wanted to let you know, we will be bringing that forward because as soon as we can kind of stabilize and have like a normal turnover due to retirements or people. due to retirements or people who move on to other jobs and not have this onslaught, as I call it. Yeah, then it becomes much easier to provide for some interesting training across support for all employees. You know, part of the goal there is to build up the knowledge of our middle managers so that we don't lose them as our senior members of staff move on or retire. Really critical as part of a succession plan is that people understand, you know, first of all, how, how to prepare a budget. I mean, a lot of these people don't, I mean, they don't get engaged in that. So looking at how to engage them in budgeting procedures and processes. That helps to build future leadership departments. So we'll be looking at things like that as well.
Yeah, one thing we don't see, and I don't know if that's happened here. I know it's happened in other places I've worked before is that one person that knows, is qualified to do a certain job. Guess what, Bob's retired next week, he's not training anybody. You know, I don't want to see that happen here.
Just because I'm reminded of, of it with the, how many have been hired? How many vacancies do we have currently? My estimate is five.
Sure, that's tiny if you were in twenty eight. Obviously that fluctuates departures and hires coming up or it's right around that same number.
I seem to remember that being lower than the last time we had that.
It is lower than the last time, we're making progress.
I'm looking for a trend, that's all.
Us too.
It'd be nice if we could get to less than five percent of the total workforce to have a report. But I'm not gonna set that as a goal because that's not real to sit right now. It'd be harmful, actually cause stress. And then we move on to things in quality of place that were not part of the plan. So for example, records management system here at City Hall Public Works Fire Agency. Is records management a part of the, in earnest, the last time that the city really did a record management system cleanse? I mean, we followed the law at the time when we went through that we, you know, indicated which documentation should be removed and destroyed and that which should be permanently retained was nineteen eighty five.
It's record retention.
Records retention, yes, this is records management. It's the overall, the function of the clerk's office, actually. And not that we've moved past granted, it's past working. Now we move on to more trying, more troublesome issue, which causes consternation among people because nobody likes to get rid of records, right? It's a difficult thing to do.
We're gonna ruin film.
Yeah, well, I mean, we are, those books up there, I mean, those go back, those are incredible. Pull one down one day and start reading, it's quite interesting. They have their appendage, they didn't even have big pens or anything decent or anything. So we are doing a records management project right now that we've launched. It will require funding going into twenty three for sure for documents destruction. We may even want to do it sooner. What, what we've uncovered is that we have documents with John Deere's signature on it still in building. I mean, there's some really old records here that are incredible. That process is gonna take a long time to go through. They've already started it, we're trying to move records, we've moved records out of the basement where we want to put in an employee area for lunching and breaking and resting. You know, one on one quiet meetings with the supervisor of their employee with employee. This is where the basement was used for a month, half of the basement was a general. You know, that side of the building is actually a chip. I'm not suggesting a chip loss, you know, not suggesting it. But, but as we move through the process of going through the records, the, the, the real money will come in and that comes in and digitizing the permanent records that we don't want to discard, you know, and just with the losses, we have to discard something. Sometimes you don't because you do want to keep it, you know. So we're not gonna destroy old maps with signatures from the original mayors. We get, we get trained to place on walls and decoration and related historicals and stuff. So Janine's been working with, with all the departments on that, so that is well underway. Nothing to not say costing us any money. It's just, it's an administrative thing we're doing. But when it comes to digitizing, yes, it will cost money so that you can actually pull the records up when you want to do a document search. Anything else you want to add to that, Janine?
No, great job.
It's for now. This next thing is really, it's a thought I just wanted to share. It's about a regional approach to utilities, operations and management. You know, the area, this area is really blessed with a lot of governmental operation. You know, going back to the days of forming vice states of regional P L. One of the oldest civic, actually, it's the second oldest, it's still functioning. That time to creating the airport authority, the jurisdictional authority, creating the civic center authority, which to this day operates as a whole jurisdictional board directors. Of course, there's always the chamber. But as you look at, you look at the area and you look at natural income, I mean, multi-jurisdictional matrix. Question that comes to my mind and haven't worked in other places where it's been done is that, you know, some of the biggest ticket items you have, expenses you have are often times that it's not fire engines and ambulances and swans, it's, it's your infrastructure. You know, the most expensive infrastructure is things like wastewater treatment plants. We built the North Slope, well now we're looking at sixty eight, eighty million to build the South Slope, right? We built that. It's a significant investment, we only have two players involved, right? East Moline and Coal Valley. And eighty percent of that cost falls on the taxpayers of the city of Moline. Most of the cities have aged infrastructure, whether you look at Rock Island, whether you look at East Moline, whatever you call it, and then our water treatment plant. These are old physical plants that through the years, you know, have been about taken care of. But they are getting to the point where they are aging. And then the question that becomes is, you know, how many ladder trucks do we want, right? You know, a lot of communities will share that ladder as opposed to buying two. Same thing goes with ambulances. So one of the thoughts is, is should we be entertaining a discussion about regionalizing our, our water and our sewer and involve our neighbors, unlike folks across the river and go down the road or like for other communities that want. And as the regionalize those operations and put in place, you know, multi-jurisdictional utility boards that govern them, oversee them, nobody loses jobs. That's what we're talking about, unions don't get hurt, like they get strengthened by it. He does what you're doing, that you're actually building these things to function into the future. They've worked great for the last hundred and fifty years. Are they that what we want to see a hundred and fifty years from now? Or we want to take care of economies of scale and maybe look for ways to regionalize that service to the citizens? That, you know, happens every day all over the place, from Chicago down to Florida. You know, you just made it, it's been done a long time. So it's one of those things that you're just tossing out there, you know, an idea. You know, that's something we should explore and we don't need an answer tonight, but it's just something that really kind of grab your hand, grab your hands around and think about.
I can tell you that, get back to the best time, like three, four years ago, we built that new water plant. The only part I remember is this, we tried to get Rock Island to go in with us. Print cell water to them, so nobody wanted, nobody wanted to do that. Now it's, what, twenty, thirty years later? Yeah, that's not such a bad idea. And I, I hope that cities are seeing the value in that. What would this be? Would this be like a working group that would go to the city of Rock Island or would it just be New York?
I think it'd be a multi-jurisdictional task force. I would actually have to study it. I, I don't think we would want it to be a leading agency. You know, I think, I think Doug, Doug would certainly be a player at that table. I think all the managers, all the elected officials, every, you know, utility directors. I think you have to bring a good group, cross section of each organization to the table to actually posture it out, including finance, right? Because obviously it's all money at the end of the day, you know? And is it feasible? There would probably need to be a feasibility study and an analysis of how we do it. I mean, we are interconnecting right now with source. I mean, and, and that, that kind of is the message, you know? We're looking at failing community wells south of the airport, they're looking for water. Water is the, is the commodity, is the thing that, that creates you, right? It's how they harness the river to build the mills, right? Water. And now we're sitting here looking at water, you know, as a life sustaining, quality of life thing. And that comes to mind as probably a great idea to at least study it, at least study it.
Yeah, I, I think that this is something that we should have, as soon as we came in. I mean, I, I don't want to take our foot off the pedal trying to also get Coal Valley. I think our first step, I've already heard from some ultimate people about, hey, how did you guys do that? But, you know, and so, so that'll, that'll open up Coal Valley as an option too. But I think the more connections we have, the easier this regional approach is going to be. I mean, Rock Island just re-did their, so it's not that we're gonna defeat them. But I, I think there are absolutely economies of scale. And there's things that we're spending money on that we might not necessarily have to that there was an actual regional approach. And so, you know, we all know that taxes are higher here than across the river and the ease and all those things. So whatever we can do to hang together rather than hanging separately.
Just don't mention suburbs.
No, I'm not even, I was around for that, no, no. I was in the, in the, in the, in the eighties, late eighties.
The amount of grants and, and money that people, you know, they want to be amazing.
You know, you go from the thirty, thirty six, that's the largest city. I mean, we were actually higher up on that list at one time. But as the suburbs expanded and exploded, you know, the crystal lakes that were eighteen thousand, they forked us, the neighborhoods have forked us, you know? And, and you do get more resources and you do have more help politically. And you do get more attention paid to you when you are a larger organization. So there is an advantage to it, no hard thing about that. But I think if we can do QCOM and that's been up and running, that's going well. That's another example of where we regionalized our efforts. So, you know, you have an existing history here of doing a lot of regionalization of efforts across municipal boundaries. So exploring and, you know, further discussing other alternatives is a great thing for the community. And it does bring down, hopefully start to bring down utility rates. So it starts to bring down tax rates as well. So that is the overall goal, the lower tax liabilities and the lower, you know, utility costs. To make it more attractive to stay on the side of the river or to attract people into the river, willing to develop it.
So you see a thumbs up for that?
Yes, if you think that's a good one, we'll pursue it. I didn't see something. I can't, I can't see your eyes, no. All right, so we'll, we'll put that out there maybe as a, starting in a later, in twenty three. All right, and something is just a purchase. It relates very specifically to the fire department to be able to provide EMS services on the new pedestrian bike way and the pedestrian path and high school path over the Mississippi River. There is one that exists over on the other side of the river with the city of Baton Rouge, but that might not always be available. So I want to ask the chief to look into it. The chief, I don't know where you're at on this, this is really more of a purchase than it is strategically, right?
Yeah, we have, we have a bid ceremony we'll be bringing in front of this body. This is basically a direct result of the unfortunate tragedy that occurred and the difficulties that we encountered at that scene. The thought process all along is that built, bridge was being built was that we would be able to drive ambulances up there. Well, I don't think anyone of us ever envisioned that the tragedy that would unfold on that particular early morning, which strictly prohibited us from driving ambulances up there because of the tragedy. And so we encountered some true difficulties in patient care and removal across the barricade, the Jersey Barrier, if you will, wall, those types of things. And a piece of equipment like this would, and now that there's discussions of limiting access, vehicular access, it's a hardened ways to prevent another tragedy like this that kind of brought us to this placeholder on this worksheet for your consideration. So that we could give the tools to the, to the EMS folks that will be required to go up there on any medical emergency or medical.
So this is just the regular gear?
No, it's, it's highly customized for emergency medical gear. I think you see them on the NFL. You watch them, they're specifically set up to carry patients that are on the backboard and they receive treatment, there's a seat right next to them, a place for all the medical gear. So it's almost a miniature ambulance capable of decent equipment.
So you take one person off at a time?
We can take one, I think it's designed, if I'm not mistaken, to transport one backboarded patient, but you could also have what we call a walking wounded to sit in another seat.
Yeah, you got a question? Chief, you have a question over here? Chief, is that something that's deployed from central station? Are we trailing it out there or is it built for a remote location there to the bridge?
So that's a good question. Operationally, where we're at right now, we believe that we can have an operational plan and we can deploy that from the central station. Their, their vehicles that we're looking at are rated for road use. They go faster than what I want our people to go. This would be outfitted with lights and sirens to make it legal on the roadway use. And we feel like that would be a better operational response of this project.
I had a very similar question except about the, the reality that the next time this happens, there'll be a train blocking, getting the gator tube to the bridge. That was otherwise exactly the same question.
And so we, we, in the fire service, have a good understanding with our police brothers and sisters that if we drive up the wrong way on a particular ramp, it's gonna access to a particular piece of road. They generally help us out.
As the flyover, why it's built first place in spring, so. All right, now this is, this falls.
What's that?
What budget was that for twenty two or twenty three?
Twenty, how's it twenty two? Yeah, that'll be a budget in twenty two. Chief, how long would it, Chief Snyder? Assuming that the council approves the acquisition purchase, how long would you expect or anticipate?
I would have to consult Deputy Chief Noyd, who's been the primary point person on that from the fire project and Sarah Markin. I do know that they have a bid in place through the sourcing purchase through John Deere. And that will be coming to council very soon. I don't know what the build time is though, I don't.
All right. Hopefully it's not like trucks we ordered.
I don't anticipate.
Twenty one, which don't even have built yet, by the way. So you know, that's how bad it is. This next issue is, these are old business items that came up on the list some time ago, right? So we have to pile that list to the back of your packet, actually. If you go to literally page, I believe it's twenty five, yeah, twenty four, twenty five. Everything that's in green up above, so item twenty two fifty two are either in progress, part of the strategic plan already, or completed. And then items fifty three to fifty seven appear directly below here. So that you know, she tied together. So one of the first things is the regional building division inspections with the neighboring cities. My understanding is on that particular item is that that was a Dove HR study recommendation from twenty twenty. Where that went, I'm not sure. I know that the building officials here, Joe, you're one of the leaders have been meeting for some time to standardize codes across the communities. have been meeting for some time to standardize, uh, codes across the communities. Another one of the three ones, which was standardizing our building codes, one city to the next. Anybody want to speak to this one elaborately once? I wasn't here.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the codes go, we do need to try to adopt and recommend amendments that are similar from city to city. Uh, Iowa, Illinois, so we're enforcing similar things. Not like part of contractors, but part residents. So it's, uh, you know, we've got a lot of different municipalities that we can work together. It makes it easier for them. As far as the study of the, of this, I mean, that, I didn't do anything with it. I don't feel it's appropriate for me to study my own provisions apart from working with other cities. I mean, that's a, that's a level above me as far as those decisions. Anyway, um, we have a good working relationship with all of our other cities. We do, uh, back up. Um, we have inspectors that are on vacation or injured. Um, we do rely on the, you know, other municipalities to help us in times of need with staffing. But this, yeah, this was a Gov HR recommend, or part of their recommendation, I believe. And, uh, we just kinda, we just kinda stopped at that point, I think. So we really would know direction on which way to go with it. So we have our staff anyway.
So I'm not sure, I mean, for those of you who are uncomfortable at the time, where, how you feel about that. You know, like something you really want to sue at this point with the other issues going on or?
Um, just catching on that. Well, when, when they made that recommendation, it was amplified by the council. The idea was that, I guess twofold. One was the concern of, we talked about this the other day, about the perception. How you talk with people, well, I work in only, and it's, their inspectors are so much tougher than someone else. Maybe you talk with somebody else and, you know, and all of them are happy, it's the same thing. But, uh, that, of, of having, uh, kind of a whole ten approach to building inspections between the cities, being able to do that, one, gives better consistency across the board for developers that are working on the other side of the problem. Uh, and two, that if you wind up having somebody who has a medical, a blue brand into that for a while, where you have people who are out and, and those sorts of things, that you have that ability to help, more seamlessly help each other out. Other than if all of a sudden our plumbing inspector, uh, you know, is out for three months for some medical issue.
He's got a bad health.
So, so now what are we doing? Well, now we're trying to bring somebody else up to speed and that might take a lot that I have to do anyway. And so the idea was to, to do that approach. And that was the direction given to staff. But I, I agree with Joe, I think that there's one key thing that just. In, in our groups, I mean, we've worked really well together. We think everybody knows each other. So if there wasn't a purpose for that, you know, I, I don't know if it'd be, none of our staff would appreciate it or like it if they would have worked together and that we earned that.
You're doing it informally as it exists today. And I'm envisioning that this was probably more of a formality to create a relationship by agreement of some sort.
Again, kind of multi-jurisdictional is the idea. And, and some of these smaller communities that you might not be able to hire somebody full-time or only have one person or something like that. If all of us kind of got together and had an insistent, uh, approach, then you don't wind up into these things where playing cities off of each other. When this, this is harder or this is easier to, uh, to get your inspections done.
I guess the staff has more to do. I mean, is it, has this given you more, I mean, our inspectors are, you know, practically.
You have only to do it there, yeah.
We can have other like local jurisdictions, Joe, that are kind of dependent on us, you know, pinch. I mean, we're running into that with utilities right now. For example, with, you know, sewage treatment plant, is it Kelona? Even they're asking for Kelona. I mean, look on that map and look where they're at and where we are. I mean, there is really, it's time, the right time is coming to get right for this discussion.
So we work really closely with these home names, Rock Island, Rock Island County. Um, I think that play on the smaller communities, Rock Island, they'll, they'll ask and they'll hire Rock Island County to lead their inspections. You know, their, their neighbors, they're already in those areas or they're following. It'd be, it wouldn't make sense for them, for Hampton to ask us to go do inspections. We gotta drive twenty minutes every time we go do something, you know, whereas Rock Island County's out there already or these home names are already there, you know. So it's, it's really kind of based on that. But I mean, those, those, those deals and those conversations happen all the time. My end right now is covering for Coal Valley while they have a, uh, a vacancy. And it works and makes it, we all know each other, we all meet monthly or bi-monthly. And, uh, again, we do work to have that consistency. But we're never gonna not hear at the counter, they don't make us do that over here. I mean, that's just the reality of our profession when there's always gonna be that perception that there's a difference, even whether there is or isn't, and every inspector has a different background and a different, uh, abilities, you know. So there's gonna, there's gonna be some differences. But we're running for pretty hard to be a real piece of.
So I guess in formal, you keep doing. There's no need for, I guess, a formal.
I would, I would put a powerful direction on that, but really, I mean, I'm looking at the old business items. I never really went anywhere. I want to make sure that we're on.
Well, I think the initial thing is not, I know, right?
It sounds like formally there's this relationship.
Yeah, that's the same informal relationship that there's been perpetually. I've had nothing to do with the vote. The vote wasn't to say, hey, continue to do what you're doing right now. The vote the council had was to formalize this and come up with a, a way that, again, that formally.
And like an insurance policy, you got back to the prices.
Well, and, and also that the idea was long-term, there would be the ability, uh, to kind of regionalize. And then that, I think that would also make it easier on implementing building codes to kind of have a consistent throughout the cities, which then ultimately makes it easier for developers and builders here. That was the, the concept of what council voted on to report. That didn't happen. And so to your point, if, because that's a directive from council that was voted on, on the, on the council floor to move forward. If this council decides, we don't want that to happen, we would have to vote against that. Cause it continues in inertia. It's not when new people are voted, everything that was voted on before just dissolves. That's the policy of the, the area.
I guess in that case, we need a, we need a formal vote.
This kind of goes to one of my problems. We're an hour and twenty minutes in, they're just explaining items. We haven't really made any determination other than a couple of the bike plans, some of the other ones. Uh, my first question is, are the staff recommendations in order of priority that they want or are these just down here in any random order?
They are in order chronologically, the way they exist inside the strategic plan at the, at the top of the page, based upon the years that they were allocated originally or set aside originally. And then staff recommendations appear or old business items appear.
And are they prioritized at all or are they just thrown down?
No, they're not, they're not.
At some point, we need to decide if we're going to, what we're going to do on the old business, like all of them went set, or not do them or do them. And I realize just that we're gonna try to pick out the top five at the end. But I think we need to speed up the process of explaining them and get around to determining what our prioritization is. We're already an hour and twenty minutes in, we're only halfway through. It's just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. I guess in that, that's the case, we need a consensus of the council to continue on with this policy or to drop it. So that's the case, we need a formal vote.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, with no motion, you can, you know, get short. Do, that would be a consensus, yeah. So somebody would have to make a motion.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, is there a motion to not proceed with the policy?
So it survives.
It survives.
Survives and then we look at when we can actually plan or schedule that in.
Okay, okay.
So I'll be looking, we'll be figuring that out in discussion with Joe and, uh, you know. All right, permanent waiting for nonprofits, no idea. Need to go back.
You want an explanation?
I think a brief explanation.
So this was a situation where we wound up making a decision to waive or, my first, I think, question was, for the YNCAs, uh, building nearby the, the golf center. And I just, I was in the motion, asked staff to come back with some kind of policy. Cause what was starting to happen was people who knew people and council would come up and ask for stuff. And so you'd make ad hoc decisions on some nonprofits would get things reimbursed or, or, uh, or waive. And others that didn't know to ask, pay them and it just was a kind of free call. And so we had, we had voted to ask staff to come back with a policy on how to address that.
Especially CEB.
Yeah, yeah. Well, cause we had asked and who is, who should that be assigned to? And, uh, staff said that CEBs shouldn't be the people who make that decision. So, uh, so we voted on it. We never.
All right, we'll do, I'll tell you what. We'll save it for kind of keeping, I will, we'll dig into that, Ryan, and see where that gap left. There's, there's gonna be a holdup. They were meticulous about keeping records. If anything, even handwritten records are fine. So I will bring that.
I, I know we have some money set aside in budget.
Like three thousand was set aside initially?
Yeah. Karen has been setting them aside, so, you know, you have some.
Okay, all right. Right, then, um, it's gonna be just a couple of, well, uh, chapter nineteen, mobile home code enforcement. That was building and zoning at the time, much in change code to do with development standards and obligations existing mobile party compliance, zoning and code enforcement, you know, to keep compliance with owners. Obviously, there was an issue back at that time historically.
And I can.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, so basically we weren't enforcing anything. We had a lot of some real issues down in Coal Valley. There was flooding, people were, I mean, for months living in squalor. And, I mean, electricity was out for a long time. We had asked for enforcement of our actual codes. That didn't actually happen. So at that point, we decided, hey, well, let's, let's clean up ours and really say what we, what we want. That, we updated it a little bit. But as part of that, the agreement was that staff would then go in and actually enforce our code in, in there. And we have a lot of the same issues that are still happening.
Still today.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's, it's bad.
So, but there was a motion made to have staff go down.
Well, I mean, one, we, we specifically said this needs to get done. I mean, we shouldn't have to make a staff, a, a motion to say, hey, enforce our code. That, that should just happen. But we said that this is a priority and it needs to happen now. And we're not really sure.
We'll, we'll, we'll need confer on that one. I don't have an actual date when the request happened. It's unresearched, I was talking about. We have, yeah, we have, definitely have notes and, uh, yeah, CEB building, building.
Yes, twenty-eight.
So we'll wrap our hands around it and we'll take a look at that one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was during this two thousand nineteen, during that flood season. And, and they have, uh, they have road issues there. It's, you know, private developments, they've got private roads and they were blocking up. They were blocking up their roads to keep the people from using them. But that was then preventing their own residents' access in and out. It was kind of a mess and so we just, and their sewer.
This is that really large mobile home.
Yeah, and their electricity for weeks was out and then trying to get buses down there for the kids to, I mean, they were, they were.
Throwing their shoes off and hiking up the, to the movie theater in order to.
Through sewage water and, I mean, it's.
And we think that aim is to the residents, to the south, they're, they were just mad.
The motion then was to, to make sure this doesn't happen again. We go and, Joe, some kind of, you know, come to some kind of entertainment, put them in enforcement and get it done. So.
And, and, and as far as I know, I don't think that anything.
Well, staff, staff will, will, will meet on, on the issue and see from the time that it happened back in nineteen, is that till now, what the situation has been, we'll take a look at that. And that personal units store, personal storage unit, these staff has enough to have taught people that have no idea. Their name is often the council's direct.
But it was. I could speak on that. So we, we want to, with the situation where some of our retail was converting from retail where we've got, um, sales tax and those sorts of things coming off of those properties to storage units that, that we don't. Rock Island had implemented a, I think it's a five dollar per unit fee to the actual renter. That there's some.
Weird rentals company collects it from ten.
From, from the tenant.
Is that a local one?
Yeah, because if it was from them, you couldn't do it from the state or whatever. And so we asked staff to come back with, to review it and come back with a, a policy recommendation to us on how we could do it or, and then make a decision if we wanted to or not. And.
Nothing ever comes back, so we only storage facility in town, the one we have, the U L.
Storage America.
Storage America by the.
The one, yeah.
The one there and then by the U L.
And then there's the one twenty-seventh and then there's.
There's a number of them.
Fifty-second, twenty-first.
Right. I mean, it sounds like to me, I'm not sure what they're doing in these, in Rock Island, so for that matter, or even across the river. But, uh, obviously some communities have local ordinances that they do impose a fee. It's a flat fee, it's a small token amount, but it's an amount that they do collect off of it.
And then they use a, it's a mutation or something.
Yeah.
That's a whole different.
Don't start.
That's actually a replay that I gave it on.
All right, that brings us to the last one, which I, I think is important. Uh, and that's this monthly utility billing versus quarterly billing. That's a very, that's a big topic, it's a big issue and it's one that, uh, that needs to be looked at. I know we started those discussions in finance and utilities and, you know, bringing that forward is something that, I see administratively as a priority as well as the council did under the old business. So the question is, you know, we already kind of started that process in twenty-two, at least researching, but we can have a guide to a point. You know how it started at your site?
Yeah, we have not. I'm sorry, that came before I was here and then we found out that yes, that had been a request from council. So Tony and I had kind of researched it and, and yes, Tony knows more about it than what I do. And.
Correct.
Absolutely. I mean, it's something I could ask Sophie because I think that you probably could do a cost analysis and a cost benefit.
Yep.
And just get back to council on just what exactly it would entail and what a type of timeline would be to, to do the information.
Yeah, again, I've seen, I've seen vendors that actually have kiosks that accept utility products as they place in libraries, city halls, you know, public buildings. So that people who are going to the library, you know, and they want to pay for their utility bill, they can insert the cash there, pay it and be done with it. That is our issue. When you talk about getting away from quarterly billing or monthly billing, monthly billing is, we have a significant number of people who only come in and they only pay cash. So, you know, they've never mandated that everybody must be on a budget plan and everybody must have a, you know, an automatic debit payment system in place. We have, and what percentage of our payments come in by cash?
Right now, twenty-six percent of all of it is.
That's you. That's you. That creates kind of a challenge.
And it's about twenty-six thousand people a year. And then it would triple. I mean, if, if it, if it stayed with that percentage, it would be about eighty, seventy-five, eighty thousand.
So one, I think this is one, two, that we conduct a cost analysis. It's important to remember that, I think it's an important service we need to consider going forward. Because it is something I've heard from many residents about as a very. Because it is something I've heard from many residents about as a very, and, and I get it, it may have an added cost and it may cut everyone's revenues a little bit, but I think that's a trade off. We need to know what that trade off is, of course, but it might be worth it because it just makes it a lot easier for, for people who are, we pay your paycheck or having an issue with payments. Now, it just can be a lot easier to budget for. So that's, you know, like it seems like.
Just real quick, I remember one other option was even if we can't move to a monthly, you know, check, you know, we would. Then we read the meters once every three months, and if we weren't able to do a monthly, we give the option of making monthly payments. So.
That exists now, you can go ahead and pay in advance.
Well, you get your, you get your billings due in thirty days instead of just getting them paid in advance.
We did a cost analysis, when was it, Tony, early two thousands? Twenty ten, twenty ten. And the recommendation at that time was to go to monthly. There was some initial cost upfront to get it done, it was minor, but feelings of the council at that time were to not go ahead with it. But it will come back and tell you to do it. I mean, it did in twenty ten, so things haven't gotten better. We had at one point talked about giving those subpoena machines that were bilingual and, I don't know, I think that would give it some.
I would say, yeah, and I would say even if, regardless of how long this takes, I know there's a lot of costs associated with postage and printing. But a lot of, so look at your credit card statements, they really push the E statements. But when you really push that, I don't need to give it an email. I'm sure there's a lot of people that if we push it enough, they're, they're actually look at it if it comes to be an email. Or maybe text from a link or who knows. But in fact, if you totally set that, that goes to the cost.
And we can maybe work this work. It's amazing how many people don't have, or maybe they're doing broadband, but there are families that are not set up to do that. But absolutely, we, we'll continue to push that along.
Yeah, your honor, one thought that will be evident before you, and actually bringing this information would be, do you have an appetite for requiring the customers to get an electronic bill in exchange for a monthly? That would be something that would, would save a lot of money. But we have a very, as Carol mentioned, there's a twenty six percent pay by cash. There's a, we have a really small percentage of customers that pay electronic bill only. I would say it's like six percent.
And we push it, we advertise it, we insert there.
And I'm all for how to push people over, but I think it would be, it'd be irresponsible, I'd never vote for requiring people to switch. Because just as Carol talks about, the, the people who are gonna have the issues and don't have internet set up and those, it's gonna be a very high overlap of people who are gonna most benefit from monthly billing. So I am all for all kind of other incentives and trying to figure out it, kind of roll that over. But that kind of, you only have it if you do it this way, it's a not starter fee.
Oh, it's a huge project, I will tell you that. Even all, everything I'm hearing costs the room, going back to two thousand and ten threatens me, but, you know, I could just resurrect two thousand and ten file and update it. I'll react to it.
Change the things.
Change the next type, so. We won't do that, but you know, we'll certainly look at that problem, I'm sure you'll be there. That's pretty much up the quality of place and then running into the final pillar of the economy. Couple of these things are all CEB related, small, except for small business mentorship program. That's not underway yet. Now that Ryan's here, things like that will get late and start to move. That was scheduled for twenty two. Let's see, let's see something quite quick. So, yeah, plans where they have the program evaluated by the end of the current fiscal year. We still got six months to go, so I'm not, I'm not ruling it out. It's one of our goals. And then the loan, the interior grant program, of course, that, that has not taken off yet either. That we were looking at, you know, something by the end of the third quarter of the current fiscal year. So both of those are. None of them are free unless the ARCA reserves become available and that is the grant program that was put council council. And then the other one with a quarter million dollars for this ARCA restricted funds, that was to help small businesses actually get started. You know, both in the downtown and along the commercial corridors that are, are dark right now on Sixteenth Street. Those are there as priorities in twenty two. Updating, what is that, location one inventory system. Yeah, this was working with the chamber, realtors and property owners. You know, this is an issue, I, I know exactly what I'm looking at here. We've got the land bank program manager recruiting, we're working on that. They could play a part in this, the economic development manager, getting ready to draft that job description and get that job out there and advertise. And then working with the chamber, one of the biggest things you struggle with, which is when you get an email from the chamber and they say, hey, you know, we've got this project. And this is what they're looking for and what do you have? That's exactly how it comes down. And it's like, well, how do we know what we have? And you ask, do we have an inventory of everything that's available? The answer is no, absolutely, we don't have a great inventory. One time there might have been something, a year ago, maybe when the chamber was still in Moline, right? Well, they're a long run. So, you know, when somebody like a Whitey's, you know, says, hey, we would like to find some space to, you know, for dry storage, what do you have? You know, we have to scramble and try and figure that out. And that's one of the many challenges and that, that's one of the things that, that Ryan's gonna have to take up with whoever we can directly bring on board. So that we can get away from, you know, with the stated owners, that Miller says, hey, we got the company X, Y, Z, and they love to use X, Y, Z. So they give all these project names, right? You never know what a company is. If they have, you know, like the interstate business, they've been, how is state business trying to locate it? Looking for a place to locate their own business or expansion of their existing business. We don't have that inventory. So we cannot be as responsive as we should as a, you can have a result in the agency of our own, that's technically, we really are our own. We know we're looking out the Moline, but Moline.
And I probably get three to five of those from the chamber. So it's, it's vital and it's one of the first things I know is being, so we'll be working.
Okay. So, you know, that's a biggie. This other one we put, we have in twenty two and it's kind of updated and adopted, ninety two quarter development plan. We did put seventy five thousand in the general fund for that. We do have an existing plan, but it's dated. We have multiple plans, we've got quarter plans that I ducked, we have quarter plans that we did. You know, do they speak to each other? Who knows, you know?
Do we have any update? Because what's, three years ago, I ducked did come in and do, and update the ninety two corridor plan.
The roadway plan.
Right.
Yeah, maybe relocated fiber to side park.
Do we have any concept if. If we need to be, if we talk to I ducked and they send them a five year budget.
With all the conversations we've had with I ducked, nobody ever brings it up. And I know Alex Elias is here, he's been here longer than me, you know, longer than I. And so the question is, if your discussions at any time or the last several years at the helm are new, that's within your jurisdiction, that area, if you've heard anything or mentioned. So it's one of those things I think we need to resurrect because one of the focus areas, I call that, I call that, you know, the east downtown. Some of the other sides of the bridge, then you have the central downtown, you know, and the new downtown, and then you got the west end. Right, so you really have three distinct areas in Moline.
Well, in, in, in that, that, I certainly was, because I agree, I, I think it's something that we all want to have happen, but nobody's, it's like, nobody's talked with anybody about it at all. And so do we need to vote as this is a priority to say, hey, let's, let's have those conversations with I ducked and let's push them to get that into five year plan because that will affect immensely. It's impossible for us to put together a development plan if, you know, we put something together and then I ducked comes in and says, oh, that actually needs to change.
There's a lot there, I mean, there's the stormwater management issues that Tony and I have been working on, trying to divert water from a huge massive water trip that are several hundred acres. It prohibits and restricts the ability of businesses there that would like to grow, they don't want to invest where it floods. So speaking very specifically of power districts, you know, we have met with them, you know, over the last year to assure them that they have not abandoned the project, that they're really pursuing it, even without the grant under, we are pursuing that. And we've had discussions with the railroad about that very project, because that also is a big question for them. So that kind of is a, that would be the single biggest project to happen between the east of the town and the bridge.
Which is reconstruction.
Well, that's another thing we need to follow up on with public workers. Does anybody, have you ever heard anything, Joe, in your discussions?
About what?
About the reconstruction plans for ninety two? That road is terrible, it's worse than Silvis, but it's bad.
That's what I was asking.
It's in the plan.
Well, it's in that plan, but I don't know if it's in I duck's next five year. That's what my question is.
I mean, if you were gonna prioritize the co-lee through the interchange versus the redevelopment, reconstruction of ninety two corridor, which one weighs more on the council's mind? Because they're, they're, they're looking at corridor, seventy fourth corridor, nobody's talking to me about the ninety two corridor. And yet one is worse than the other.
Right.
So are the council priority, I mean, where do you, they're both priority, you know?
Can we have two priorities? In that plan, there were some cost estimates and some approximate dates and targets on that plan, but I don't know.
Well, and, and from talking with the consultants that are doing it, they were just like, if this gets adopted, here's how fast we can do it. But unless I duck puts it in their five year budget plan, it's gonna sit there until.
I can tell you, I've physically seen engineers down there within the last six months.
That's great.
I had, what's that mean? I don't know.
I ducked.
I ducked, I think they're.
Does anybody know the last time that there was any major work done on that corridor?
It was the nineties, they took all the manholes and built concrete around them and they asphalted the road. That's been the major work.
That's it?
That's, that's, that all I can remember. Tony, do you remember any others?
That's exactly right on. They, they overlaid the corridor.
Interiorated.
Yeah.
All right. We'll, we'll follow up with I ducked, help you out whether, where that's at. Might go.
That'd be great.
David, yeah, I, I think I want to see something happen there because nobody's going to reinvest in that corridor given the conditions of that road.
Probably like a single lane road.
Yes.
This also plays into our plans with the university and Riverside Park. And all the stuff we're trying to do with multimodal, this ties in. You know, that, that new plant has bike lanes, it makes the park better, it allows us more room for footsaw like we, so, because the, the total configuration of that park changes. So it should be a high priority.
Okay, so notice, so. That's in twenty two, we'll pursue it in twenty two, that project will carry over, that's for sure. This, this next item, the next two items are really out there in twenty three and it's workforce development with academic institutions. You know, we've kind of started that a little bit, we're already requesting on my university, I think we did it with the high school. I don't think we reached out to Blackhawk Community College at this point. So, I mean, we are already having these discussions, but right now, really having formal plans, it looks like it was twenty three was originally planned and it's not a fundable project in administrative time. You know, and then the last, last item is we've already kind of talked, well, there's two more items, is the explore solar energy opportunities. And this means a lot of things, a lot of different things to people are just talking about. Some people think about solar on, on people's homes, you do see that around town occasionally. Some people see it, you know, like over at Tony and the garage, we've got solar over there. Our municipal building don't have solar to my knowledge. If I'm wrong, you're right, we don't have any solar. You know, and then, and then you look beyond just having these, these small solar arrangements and you look more, more on a grander scale. And you look about, look at land south of the airport, you think about solar farms. You think about what kind of power could be generated per acre. And those formulas are there and the land is there, we don't know a lot of land. But the question becomes is do we want to be more energy independent? Do we want to be like a local government rather than having a power plant, having solar generation that would actually come back and pay the city money to power, you know, power purchase agreements where we're selling it to the grid? And that we become a solar producer and the numbers are significant. If you can get up to two hundred acres, you could produce enough power that power is not sitting there. So the part, the question that becomes is how, how far do we want to explore that as an alternative revenue source for the future as the gift from the sun that never stops giving.
Right, and Madam of the best one, right?
And the, the way, we talked about doing things that can make us money, giving priority to those, and I think that could fall in line with that. And even if we don't generate too much money, but if we can save money in the long run by not spending with our company. I, I, I think it would be worth exploring, I don't know those cost analysis, how they're doing, but it's worth exploring, not only to say what if we can make money. We already talked about giving that a priority in the past.
And, and I guarantee you, there are installers and stuff that will come in and they'll do the analysis for you for free because they want to sell you the equipment. So.
Right.
I, my thought is that this should be part of, to at least find out what that looks like.
I don't know of anybody else talking about it, we're all frank. I mean, nobody's looking at it.
So what do you need?
Yeah, we would want, I'd want thumbs up, include that in twenty three, kind of, let's do something.
I'll just mention too, if this is a, after the investments pay off, it becomes a revenue source, it just means lower taxes.
That's the lower your tax.
Or at least keep the taxes where they're at, it's like, who they, they.
We want to bring, we want to bring us out there to be competitive with our neighbors.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
All right, so then the money generators.
Real quick, just a great Curia partnership, they've done a lot of work on this. They did analysis, they looked at several properties in the Curia area, two thousand dollars and said, then property tax, like two hundred thousand. Because you're now actually generating. So they've, they've done my work on that, so these are, looking for that.
Very good. And the only thing that's left, we already talked about personal storage fees, so the last thing is this contracting ARCA reporting. Carol, I mean, that's all about you and the amount of time you're spending on all of that, what the other local governments have been doing, you want to kind of broach the subject now.
We talked early on when we first reviewed the ARCA plans, just to kind of see how it's going, how much time is it going to be taking to manage the ARCA plans, especially with all the federal components. And last year, we spent considerable amount of time studying all the internal controls, we've got a really good system set up. But as, it just depends on which ARCA grant lines are going to which entity. We have found that there is a tremendous amount of handholding to ensure that they are complying with sending this proper documentation, that they, you know, comply with the, with the heads. So I think we're probably good to point to that as we gear up, really gear up now in twenty three and that, it's, it's not just like my time and, and Lori Loa. But NACI, the executive administration on that, there's just, there's a lot of work. And there's also a lot of people that are very, very qualified out there. If we were to contract some people just on an hourly basis to help with some of this, to oversee it. you know, there's qualified people out there that we can maybe piggyback on. It was, it's just a consideration, like I say, the ARPA funds can, can help.
And the ARPA could pay for the services of a professional firm to actually assist you.
Yes. I mean, we certainly don't, we want to continue being totally compliant with ARPA, but we also want to continue, you know, moving, yeah, yeah, moving forward with everything else we're trying to do. And we would still be overseeing a, a contract with a person who I'm sure that it's being done.
Sure. I just wondered if any objections to us pursuing that assist us in keeping a A-one team in the finance department base. I don't want the both to get swamped.
Yeah, I just thought we already gave proof of that.
I think you kind of did, we just, we, we wanted to give the controls set up in place and just wanted to revisit it, make sure council is comfortable that different when we come back, and it's probably doing twenty-three.
Great.
Obviously, before I would think it to have, we'll see what the cost would be.
Okay.
Just fair. So, no thumbs up, me at this point.
Okay. Costs. I'm sure you'll bring that back.
Yeah, it's in contract, yes.
Okay. That's great. So that being said, we've kind of exhausted all of the projects that were even not started on old or old directives, and some staff recommendations as well. So we've kind of gone through the whole list. So, you know, it begs the question going forward, for this little point, that's going.
All right, are you going to cover some of the things in here, like the, um, the twenty-three, the Southland Township Fire District? Does that guy have a little more questions on this?
Yeah, I'm going to do that, I mean, it's up to you.
Do we just want to throw it up with questions?
Yeah.
Pack it?
Yeah. Maybe quick for a number of staff there.
All the more your question was.
Well, on the, uh, it, it says here that, um, it renews every August, so it's kind of, you know, kind of sensitive to find a solution. We've been talking about this one for three years. Yeah.
Me, three years.
I don't know, maybe you've worked more than that.
No, I think we just, it, we wanted, but they called down there and I asked, hey, how many calls are happening down there? Unfortunately, they're getting a lot of service and, uh, paying, about ten percent of what our residents are paying for.
Chief and Karen responded to that, I'm sure you're working on that.
The last place that that was as far as I could, in Ware, was with Dirk.
Yeah.
And Dirk was, uh, entering into some negotiations with, um, Towage, Towage, yeah, Southland Township, uh, legal representatives.
We'll have legal to look into that.
Yeah, and, and there's a hard cut off of August.
August first, or do you have them up?
I can't remember. We were just told it was August by, by Dirk.
All right, well, three Augustes, you have a pile.
Yeah, two Augusts. Yes, that's actually different. Is that for non-city residents in the Southland Township, or then not? Right, yeah, so, so it's unincorporated.
Unincorporated.
Right. That we cover, so I pay my fair share. Well, you're paying more than your fair share, because I only pay ten percent of, yeah, so.
Well, this is like North Shore Drive. So Fruitland as well.
Fruitland, Fruitland, yeah.
We're working on those annexations, so.
It's, so what is going, I, I saw on here that we have sent letters out again, but we sent letters out two years ago.
All right.
Annexation.
No, we are, we are.
Sent them out again?
Yeah, we got calls.
It's incremental, it's some people.
Well, but I don't think that we, we annexed any of them from the last summer.
No, we just, Tony, when did we send the letters out, was this recent?
Yeah, a month ago, we have a meeting tomorrow with Asol Blank, to talk about the annexation. Yeah, we're going to bring up, up to twenty-eight, uh, letters, twenty-nine. We've got, uh, percentage of them, I would say five or six, that is probably making a profit of the, of the.
Was, was there any problem, you didn't send out the letters before?
I have no clue.
I don't know, I wouldn't.
We weren't involved. No way of knowing. So we are pursuing those.
Well, everybody has their calls.
Good. That's good.
Well, they're great. They got a good, they got a good thing going.
Excitable or exciting.
Next question is on.
Yeah, questions, yeah.
So number five, it says that this is completed, says that Marty, this is the volunteer policy, release of liability program. Says that Marty talked to the buyer. Um, I, I appreciate that we did update this, um, but what the, what the direction from the council was on this was that we wanted to increase the, the options for people to volunteer with the city. Because like, we, we had this weird situation where we were letting some people, like out of Silicon Island, bring in chainsaws and test things down and whatever, and then other people wanted to.
Weed eating on the sidewalk in the park and get rejected.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and they, they get threatened that they're going to get fined for it. And so I, I, I do notice that the weed eating apparently now is okay. Uh, says the, the, well, that's what the website that you sent us to on, on this thing says it is. But, or we, we had people who, um, rent a softball diamond for their girl softball team, and the place needs dragging, and they take a, uh, uh, lawnmower up there to drag it, and then they get yelled at and whatever. So I, I, what we had asked staff to come back with was a much broader opportunity for residents to volunteer. I mean, because we had, I've had people say, you know, old retired guys said, I'll mow over there. I mean, it hasn't been mowed before, or, you know, and I'll go and I'll do it. And, and I come to staff and they say, no, they can't do it. And I'm like.
Or they're going to have to get in it, kind of under the table, and frame it with whatever's taking care of that park, and we'll pick up all the men, you know, hit the trash pre-stage for you over here, yeah, it's like the other city, and then you fix it up, and it's just not a, a good, not a good thing for the neighborhoods.
Right. Because, because all we keep doing is telling the residents, no, you can't make your city more beautiful, and it's crazy. And so.
Did we ever, did we ever define the things that we would like to see people do that are safe and not dangerous to produce results?
But, but that's exactly the, the thing is, is that if you go to this website, it says you can now weed, like in the park, but it says no other motorized, anything, you can't do a mower, you can't do whatever.
So just edge the sidewalk and get out.
I, I don't, I mean, and I don't know who came up with that policy, because we had asked to come back to us to set up policy.
Eric.
And.
Yeah, so public work, well, parks, public works, worked with Dirk and Alice. Yeah, uh, and we went through the list of what we could do, and it says volunteers may do the following. Pick up garbage, and stick slash branches, operate hand tools, including bring shovels, trimmers, edges, work on special projects with city staff, must be coordinating with Parks Recreation Department. We do have the city waiver there that whenever a group does, we share that, and it's just good back to us. Um, volunteers may not do the following, operate mowers, chainsaws, tractors, construction equipment of any kind, or unauthorized equipment, cut down, or trim trees, use of any kind of those to fertilize grass, to, and then volunteer for a program.
So it was, it was, that, that is the program that got it put in place.
Right, but that policy never came back to us, but we still allow people to take chainsaws onto Silicon Island. And, and, and there's, there's certain things where we, we exactly look like all the.
Is that black neighborhood cleanup day type thing?
No, it's like, say, you would care, like, if that wouldn't exclude someone from, like, Forest Park, where they would then mow the boulevard, because that's not the park's property, if it's a figure on the park, you know, property. It says, they want to take a more, uh, active role in unifying the park, give it more ownership, but we kept it at the face of doing that. So somewhere in there, we wanted, uh, guidance and some.
It, it, and, and the direction from council was, we wanted it broader. Now, they would have to sign a waiver, but we wanted it as broad as possible. We wanted to create a volunteer corps that improved, and quite honestly, if we would have had it in place when COVID hit, things would have been much better in the city of over there.
Well, yeah.
COVID showed everything, so. Right, but that's where we had, we had asked for it, and a policy apparently had put together, but.
Do this and it's off.
But it, well, it never came to get any of our, and the direction was that we wanted a policy to come back to us to give it.
But legally, I mean, we have to check the legal, I don't know if we want to joke, keep citizens taking chainsaws.
That's a policy decision on how much, uh, liability we want to take and how they would sign waivers. I, I, I don't disagree with you, it's, it's a question that we got to ask, but it's certainly something that is a policy decision. Yeah, it's not illegal for that.
So we may also want input from our best specialists.
Yeah, so we included, yeah, it was Allison and that, the unions, um, because we had several people volunteering at the Riverside. The friends of Riverside Park, um, that were using chainsaws, and we told them that they couldn't. And it's basically from the risk management, legal and the unions, that we collected all that information.
So everything got vetted, it just never really came back.
Yeah, well, because I think we wanted a broader, uh, policy than what that was.
It became, it became narrowed based on legal and risk management.
And so when we asked about it, then we just got people who were.
So where, where do we go with it then?
Yeah. So this is true, so we have these groups, we have Boy Scouts groups, Boy Scout groups, we have three groups that are doing projects in East Moline. We sent, uh, six, six scouts to do in the last two years, do projects in East Moline. Can't do them in Moline, we can't get the projects done, you know, for whatever reason, it's just hard to get things done in Moline. So we sent them elsewhere, Blackwood State Park, conservation projects out in East Moline. Um, and, and I, I think, you know, I was with those guys with chainsaws on Silicon Island, we were doing scout projects out there in the group, you know, after.
Trailers.
Two thousand seven storm.
Yeah.
We were getting trails back together, and so, and then you can't do any of that, so.
Although, some do, and they, they just turn a blind eye to some, but others, and that's, that's why the policy needs to be.
We have residents, we have a lot of residents with a lot of skill that want to do a lot of things for the city. And they, they call you up and they say, I'd like to be planting wildflowers and trees, or cleaning up or doing this.
That requires full program management by somebody. I mean, if you have a hundred people who want to do that, that's like adding, you know, twenty-five percent of our work total.
Or you create a volunteer corps, or you, you create an actual volunteer corps, and you have a, a, a group of residents that manage it and work through it. I mean, there's lots of cities that do that, and then it goes to, you create situations with snow angels, where you have that volunteer corps coordinates for elderly people, get their, uh, their sidewalks shoveled and, and, and those sorts of things. Because there are people who want to help others but don't have a resource on where to do it.
I'm going to give them all shovels in the winter time for the sidewalk.
Because the flowers and the plants of Ben Motorway Parkway, that's all done by volunteers, and that all people do. And all, you know, and there's people that live around parks that want to do the exact same thing, and they're, you know, retired guys and gals, that live literally across the street from these places, that take ownership, and then supplement parks, and supplement, uh, public works, and do a wonderful job.
And, and then allow those staff to go, and, I mean, I was driving down thirty-six and sixteen, the grass is three foot high right now. And, and I know that's Walgreens, but we do, but we've got, we've got places all over the place that it's not being mowed. And if we had a volunteer corps that we could help with these sorts of things, then we could actually cover everything. And that's a policy direction by us.
It is, it is. It's a policy direction, because you have to create a volunteer corps board.
Yeah.
Like, like any other boarding commission that you have created already. And those volunteers would be appointed, and those volunteers would coordinate the effort.
And that would be amazing, if we have so many people in this community that would sign up for that.
And say no, and say yes.
Any complications to that interview? So that would likely erode their work.
Oh, there's plenty of work, plenty of work.
No, so they say this is, sorry, are union work, and they are right. So there would have to be some discussion or agreement about how much, uh, could be taken away from it. So their argument, and this is routinely upheld by arbitrators, is that if it's union work, regardless of whether it's more than they could ever do, the employer cannot give it away to somebody else. So we, like, you know, volunteers or some kind of thing.
So picking up trash, we can't let volunteers do that?
So it would depend on what the work was, but when you're talking about mowing or, or tree trimming or snow, then it's clearly union work.
Well, that's, uh, city, to do sidewalks. No, I mean, sidewalks are fine, picking up trash is probably something that would, would be approached a lot, but yeah. Mowing, I, it's, it's the easy argument, if we need more mowing than the city.
Hire more people.
We should be hiring them.
Roll the union.
They're actually doing the mowing that needs to be done now.
So all I'm saying is that before we decide on a, on a policy or a program, there does have to be conversation and agreement with the union.
And that's where we asked three years ago for staff to come back with that, to have that policy discussion.
So it sounds, but it sounds like it was.
It was. It just never, ever made it back to council.
Yeah.
So it never actually did the directive?
I think it is that never happened, uh, coming back.
So you're saying, you mean the policy, uh, group?
Yeah.
Making policies? You're right.
So you're saying you wanted to come back and for an upper down vote?
Well, want to see what it is and then have a conversation on how we can expand it, and that's where.
Was this program been in place?
It was right when Marty first came on.
So we're talking like two years ago?
Yeah.
So.
Just about a year after we had made the rational.
Right.
So it's been implemented and it's running right now.
Yeah, I would say any group that calls and wants to volunteer, like we've used, uh, just in the last month, we've used Kewanas, Painted, and Peterson Park Shelter, Keemah and Beepah Pole, Painted, uh, Six, Smaller Shelter, Ben Motorway Parkway. Any group that calls and wants to do a neighborhood cleanup, we provide gloves, bags, garbage picking ropers. Um, Rotary has talked about wanting to do some type of a project this fall, where they, they contact either myself or the park operations manager, or Rod, municipal services manager, if there's a plethora of them, so we can have them do. But going back to, when this all started is when we, I guess you're saying two thousand and eighteen. I guess with my experience in twenty twenty, we were looking at more volunteer opportunities, uh, because we didn't have the seasonal staff during that summer. So we were looking at opportunities for people to do more in the parks, and the union was the, the big thing. Mowing, chainsaws, like those were the two good ones. And we were, we did have somebody at Riverside, were trying to trim trees and take down the rest trees, that stopped them.
Yeah, that'd be probably.
Yeah, that's a scary thought, the chainsaws.
I thought Marty had done a memo back then, shared it from each other.
If you could find it, it'd be great. I, I have no idea.
So, I guess what we're leaving us is, we're trying to find Marty's memo, what's gone through, right by the council.
You like the rights, so I'm sure. We'll continue looking into it.
If there was an email, I'll search there, I would help search for anything coming from Marty's mailbox regarding.
Volunteer, Marty slash volunteer, slash partners.
Okay, anything else in the bag? Questions? Yeah, number nineteen, um, we were originally set to. Yeah, number nineteen, um, we were originally set to have a right of way homework session. Um, this one talks about the Mid-American Agreement and other right of way agreements. We had that meeting this morning where, um. Is, is that going to go anywhere? I, I know we're going to have some kind of informational discussing people who have violated our, our ordinance.
Yes.
But it's something broader than that. I mean, obviously we've had the conversations about, um, people, uh, fixing the sidewalks, not leaving gravel in it all the summer long. All of those sorts of things. Um, this just seems to say. Hey, it's, it's going on, but I think it's.
I think we're past this review. I think we're.
You know, policies, so are we going to do that through an informational and if so, we just, because like I said, this was originally supposed to be around the discussion. It's gotten, this replaced it, it got moved.
Yeah, it did because we had missed the one meeting and had to push it back. Yeah, I think after today's meeting, I mean, and then all the documentation we've prepared, we're ready to move forward. I think it's informational at this point, the council, before we are to speak on the meeting that we had with our staff this morning. Uh, and then take it forward from there, that's important for, for we don't need further. Because once we, once we launch it, we launch it, we don't go back.
So maybe the twenty?
Yeah, the twenty eighth, yeah, like you see that as an informational item, twenty eighth, you know. That we go forward with dealing with all of the aerial kind of low ground installations in the city.
Uh, I know number thirty-three, um. So just on, on sidewalks, Catholic policy update, obviously Jeff has been walking through on that, but presumably we're satisfied. I know that's something that's been an item of discussion too for the Morgan Center Commission. I know that, I know the council has rescinded the, this a policy that was in place and that's allowed to operate. In format right now, that long-term return to having an actual policy. I don't, so I guess Myers, I'd like to understand a little bit as to whether that's going to be routed through Morgan Center first, but they're like, as the commission, then to come, then to come to council.
To get input.
Um, I do know that because at the end of the week, given that that, um, at Morgan Center, that would, uh, work with people was being done to get to a new policy. Um, or that that was in queue, but I'm not sure what the.
Uh, nor, nor am I at this point, uh. Schmidt, but it's Riot, you've been looking into where he left off, who at Legal he was working on that. Because, yeah, I never had a conversation about that before.
Well, and then along those same lines, the, the park lets, where we are with that, we have to agree with the.
But it's true, I mean, he was off his swing hammer for some guys.
There are additional ones that are created, I know, and they are very built.
They're open.
But, uh. And they're coming slower than, by working with students or students, they come slower, they come a lot more perspective.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so that, and that also allows them to roll those together. But there's, there's just two sites out there now.
Yeah, I've seen on these two, uh, because there's only one.
What was the second one?
Uh, Kathy Fresh.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm just saying, okay, till the bus, till the bus goes by.
Is there a list of businesses that want them, like a waiting list, or how, how is that priority given to?
Yeah, uh, and that had, had been a long conversation and I don't remember exactly. There was a talk of either doing it through a random bra or through, uh, initially La Vamor Cina was awarded as people's business in town, so that I can have a security basis. The desire for them overall had decreased some, some places that had wanted it initially, but well, now I don't need it as much, but there still are a number of businesses that are very interested. I know that information was something that Jim had, I don't have a file. Wouldn't ask Brian to have everything off the top of his head.
I'm just curious.
And we can talk about it at the Morgan Center Commission and I don't remember exactly which method, but it was the idea that we're first come or, uh. Or everyone put your name in and we draw a lottery, it was a process like that.
We'll follow up on that.
Oh, yeah, kind of adjacent to that, number twenty-seven is the bathroom down at Bass Street. Originally kind of hoping that, that we would have that in, but this year's Wisconsin concert season. Uh, I, I know that the property owner gave us the Heisman, or I guess the property PC, uh, gave us the Heisman, but are you reviewing the agreement?
We were, and we believe that we can go forward based on Jeff Minis' suggestion and advice. This year was not the year to do that, simply, yeah, time.
So, so is that something that we will have up and running?
Yeah.
Before the council season starts?
Yes. Yep.
Maybe, maybe we should increase it, put a placement. Maybe that's why they decided to retract. Uh, okay, that. Yeah.
Yeah, originally there's fire station, at one point, where that water. There's an old plant, there's an old plant, shows it on the waterfront with barbecue space in the water. Never materialized, I bet it cheap.
Yeah. The retaining wall policy and ordinance, uh, that's number thirty-four. Um, I mean, this says that we did an inventory, uh, that's been collected and policy changes have been implemented, but if you walk, if you drive around. Mowing, especially along those hills, um, you can, you see these retaining walls that are deteriorating, falling into the sidewalks. Um, we had asked, and this probably goes back to twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. That we had asked to come back with a, a policy, we, we had, we had on the floor made this policy that you said that it's the, the assumption is it's theirs unless. There's some proof that the city did work. But they were supposed to come back with a policy on how do we address all of these crumbling things? Because, you know, right now we just let them continue to fall into the sidewalk and tell somebody complains and then. Pick up the, the rocks and then eventually a section of it washes out and, and so. That was the idea that we wanted staff to come back with a policy on how to do preventative, what was the responsibility, how to do this? What was there some kind of incentive program that they thought was the best way to do it?
Or sharing with the homeowners, if they could have.
Yeah, whatever that, are, are there some locations that are more vital than others and somebody put in, in the retaining wall? Ten years ago and it started falling versus some of these.
You mean any old looks, something really old?
Yeah, exactly, like, and just nothing ever came back. And now, I mean, it says in progress, but.
Find out. Uh, so we were working on it, Dolan, you were working on that maybe. Was it legal?
Yeah, it was when Brad Harmon was in Legal Division, I don't even remember if that was last year or year before, but, um. We had a light duty person who took the snow routes and went and recorded all of them and rated. And so there, there was a good inventory then to start, but we can work on a policy. I don't know that that would be legal or maybe legal working with, um.
Public Works.
Public Works, maybe we could go after work together.
We got sidewalks, retaining walls, that's, that's possible.
Yeah, I would be proactive with that, with the.
Yeah, we're kind of policy, partnership, program, because most public works.
Exactly, and, and, you know, but a, at the same time, if we wind up doing this, we seem like the John Deere.
Like you're one.
By the, no, John Deere's old company, you wind up with a retaining wall that is probably engineered to take nuclear blasts, so. Yeah.
It's comparable to the wall, but actually it's down by the water.
Yeah, I mean, it was. Probably seven hundred fifty thousand.
Still.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's. Forty-nine, uh, the water and sewer study for properties outside the corporate limits. Or the rate studies, forty-nine?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, sorry. Forty-eight, um, that when I was reviewing through the dashboard, it talks about, uh, doing rate studies for sewer and water. But I just want clarification that, because we voted not to do rate studies within the, for sewer and water in the municipality. Sewer and water was only for those outside the municipality. The only thing within the municipality we worked with, you know, was for stormwater rating.
Tony, do you recall? Because I know we initially had meetings in here with consultants about the overall rate study.
Yeah, the, what Alderman is referring to is during the budget discussions, there was, there was extensive discussion about the chip debt relating to chip seven. And, uh, there was a proposal to ship that chip debt away from utilities. And, uh, the resulting discussion ended up pushing the debt back on with the utilities. But at, uh, at the same time, there was discussion about rate studies. And, um, we did check the minutes and in fact, there is a, a motion that was passed to have rate, the rate analysis done for the storm control. Uh, but since the conclusion to that, the strategic plan is adopted and the strategic, the strategic plan includes rate, conducting rate studies for all the new.
So.
That was my concern was.
Which one is?
Well, I, I think when, when the council makes a specific motion and votes on a specific thing versus ninety-seven things. And it being slid in as three point one four two and then say, oh, well, you guys voted for that. I think is really bad comments. Because we specifically voted that we didn't want a rate study for water and sewer within the, the city boundaries. We want it for the outside.
Outside users.
Right, because we had.
And stormwater with it.
And stormwater with it. That was what we voted for specifically.
When was the last time we did a rate study? So, I'm just curious.
Yeah, twenty thirteen and, and, uh, I, I hope that you're not implying that the staff is trying to circumvent the council's direction. That's not the case. I can tell you that the, the instruction and the direction we've gotten from our reconsidering is that in order to provide the outside rate. Analysis that you request, we need to do a cost of service analysis for the entire utility, which is what we can, this process, that maybe we have to do tomorrow. Present information.
In order to create the outside user rates, we have to know what the current rates would be on the outside.
Okay. Mark, thank you.
Yeah, well, no.
Well, no, I would, I would question with that, I mean, if we base our rates on what our current rates are. Then we can set the outside rates based off of that.
It's, um, it's more complex than I have the time to explain to you today. I would just prefer to present the information to you all when I'm prepared.
Okay, I, I just, I just don't feel comfortable when we specifically voted against something for us to move forward with something. Because it happened to be in a seventy-page document slid in under, and, and I'm not saying it's nefarious in any way, shape or form, but. It's, it's not what, what we as a couple. And it's not like that was something we voted for ten years ago. We, we voted for this budget session specifically that.
Now, it made it into strategic plan because it was identified going back to May of twenty twenty-one.
But, but we didn't vote specifically at it.
And then as we progressed through the stage that was in the plan, and then there's the budget development process. And then we get past budget development and now we are where we're at.
So yeah, we specifically voted it out.
Yeah. We will, we will look at it, Tony and I are meeting, we're meeting tomorrow, we're meeting tomorrow, I can't, I can't speak to it right now.
I just assumed it was a typo, because there's a bunch of typos in here. It says that the whole project down at Riverside is only five point four million, but it's seven point.
That's the four.
No, that's not what it says in here. It says both the tennis courts and the pool is five point four million. I mean, so there's, there's all sorts of typos in there, so I just assumed you left out outside because that's what.
Okay, do you have anything else?
But we're moving forward with the rate study anyway.
Well, I mean, where are we at, Tony? I mean, these people have been working on this for how long? Help me out because I'm not managing that correctly.
Yeah, so, uh, I could tell you that we, we've invested staff time, there's been no investment in, uh, um. Service to an outside firm. You, you, in accordance with the budget, you use this description burn that we have and, and we'll gain this description just like we have been the last.
And they're professional in, in contrary to directions of council, is what I'm hearing tonight. That in order, in order to create an outside user rate, it can't be done without a full understanding of the full costs of production, distribution and so on. Right?
Waldron, how did they come up with the outside rate last time? They just doubled, they just doubled it.
No science, just.
Yeah, there was any science, there was just, you lived outside, we were like twice what's inside. That's my recollection.
So it's, there's not a need for it, is just staff, we need to come back with what we're going to charge outside.
Double.
We've already doubled, we've. Two and a half times, I mean, I, that, but that's where we at staff.
And I think if you want to legitimize what you're trying to charge outside users, we have outside users, so this is an outside user. You know, we got people.
And we came up with that, with that, that we do every day.
Tony, you have some?
Yeah, so I would, I would want to remind you that the, um, the outside retail rate for customers for drinking water is two hundred percent. The, the, um, what counted this direction from council was that the outside retail rate for wastewater was a hundred and ten percent. And that's where, that, that was what I wanted to know where that came from and we didn't have the answer, no one had the answer, so in order to get that answer, you have to do a cost of service analysis.
Which, which, if I can bang the question, if you're looking at building a sixty-eight million dollar wastewater treatment plant. Logic would tell you, you must have these numbers in order to understand how the cost that plant and how bond payments are going to go to repay the plant. I mean, if it is going to be a revenue bond one way or the other, I mean, you have general obligation debt to build a wastewater treatment plant. So you need these numbers to understand that cost and that return on investment.
It was part of this presentation that was presented to you regarding the price of the planning study proposal that we were in the process of doing a rate analysis. That would be required to secure the winter's funds.
Okay, thank you.
We'll know more tomorrow. I haven't heard about this for some time. It's been a while since we met on.
Are there any other questions on the back?
That's it. I mean, if there's any other priorities that you're thinking of that we haven't even discussed, we got to talk about in the last year.
Okay, well, I have all said that, I guess we'll move on to, we have a detective session tonight?
Okay.
Um, we move on to, uh, comments by the Alderman, start over there. Mr. Lane's business. Alderman C. S., uh, nothing around there. You guys are.
They're all at work.
I'm sorry, we do just start with one by.
All right, we start with. Okay.
Uh, I just, I, I mentioned this, some people I, uh, this weekend rode, uh, Quancy Bicycle Club has a ride that goes around the Quancy's, um, and then some. Did a hundred miles each day and. Uh, and luckily in the last two years, it's stayed local and we normally used to go to the Uke and back. But it's just always such an honor and privilege to have a last leg of the first day, be within Moline. And we normally used to go to Duke and back, but it's just always such an honor and privilege to have the last leg of the first day of being within Moline. Going over the bridge this year, back to the Isle of Cymon. And, um, I'm just grateful for these opportunities and partnerships with clubs and organizations.
Thank you. Um, yeah, you know, May is, um, every year, I've learned in my three years, is picking up Brad Holman. So I think June ought to be the Brad Holman appreciation. Because it's, it's the year that, you know, the grass weather, I think it's something, I guess, enormous number of workers. And so, you know, we all here, I'm sure everyone else, it's maybe not you. You know, we get these phone calls from residents about grass and this, and all has to go to Brad. And he does a, I know, I know the stress of mine, but, uh, things are looking great in the city. Looking better, so. All this, all the, all the, um, you know, all this stuff that gets sent down to Brad, I just wanted to mention.
Pass that message to Brad.
We, we budgeted to hire a second.
We're working on that. We're actually working.
We moved it up from next year to this year.
Yep.
Along the same lines of May and tall grass, um, we were in Wisconsin and a lot of people don't cut their grass in May for pollinators. And they had signs out in these, um, yeah, all over the place, um, that said, uh, no mow May. And, uh, that way people knew they weren't cutting their grass because of pollinators. Yeah, and so I don't know how many. That could be their excuse too, of course, but there could be people that actually don't cut their grass in May because of that. So just, I don't know if that's something, who adopts that or what.
Maybe we can start jumping your yard, you.
We need a motion from, Your Honor, make a motion to council convene the executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees applied by LCS one twenty slash two C one. Seconded, uh, seconded by, um, Jim, your role call vote.
Alderman, lawyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Welton.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Masias.
Aye. Aye.
And then. AI twenty-eight.
Yes.